Action to fill the city council vacancy. But then during the agenda item itself, I wanted the applicants to have the first speaking opportunity then. So I'm going to open public comment again, then have the applicant speak first, and then invite anybody who wishes to speak on behalf of a particular applicant, or somehow tell the council what they think of the applicants to speak at that point. So I'll open public comment now for comments on the special meeting agenda. I do have a speaker card from George Barrich. Feel free to come on up.
Mr. Mayor, would you be so kind as to read the speaker card that I handed in tonight?
Well, so two things I actually need to say at this point. First of all, at your request, the city is granting the ADA accommodation you requested for an additional minute. So you'll see the four minutes up there. If you need such accommodation in the future, make sure the request, the city clerk, is in 48 hours in advance as required by the rules of conduct, as this request was. And second, you wrote on your speaker card, Councilman Barrich, 21825, resident of Cattati, citizen business.
Thank you, sir. I feel it's very important to be recognized by my official title that I've earned so gallantly by serving the city. I did also bring in a reminder of my plaque that was sent to me a couple of weeks after Lauren Burgess left the city. Oddly enough, I received it two weeks after that, but I wanted to show that. I want to speak to procedure tonight, not about the application, real quickly. Again, we noticed from the agenda packet tonight that my full application, which I submitted to you a couple of weeks ago, formally with the city clerk, deputy clerk, and then also provided each one of the city council members a hard copy of my application so you could review it in a timely fashion. Tonight, if we look at the agenda packet, my application, my request, and my statement is absent in the packet tonight. That's a huge injustice being done to one applicant here. Whether it was accidental or intentional to cancel a candidate for this vacancy is absurd, okay? It smacks of a civil rights violation. It's serious business to do this. Any one of the other applicants would have had the opportunity to go back there, read my application tonight, and decide whether they wanted to continue as an applicant or withdraw their application, okay? So they were denied that access as well. So what I would sincerely ask is because the system has been abused like this, that we simply adjourn this meeting to a time and place certain in the future where we, all the applicants, can be treated fairly, and the public at home can go online and read my application as I submitted to you and filed with the city to avoid unwanted costly litigation. Now, I'm not holding every one of you responsible for this. There is a brutal error that happens. Ms. Alderman, I read the email that she sent to all of you this morning pointing out the fact that this error needed to be corrected, and that was at 11 o'clock today. And it's still not been rectified. This is a serious reflection on your leadership and how this town is run. So I would ask you, in the interest of justice and fairness, and to the other applicants, to adjourn this meeting and reschedule it to a time and place certain in the future where all of our rights are respected equally, and we all get an equal chance to have the public and the community read our applications. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else at this public comment period? Ms. Alderman, I'm sorry. I had a card from you as well. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Since I'm not staying for this treaty planning, I'm going to do my public. You all need to really be watching what's happening with the code enforcement scandal. You're all just letting it go. And the latest chapter is Robert Smith, the attorney who spent 53,000 over budget last year. This time, I waited four months and I get the PRA request of his billings for July through September. And he has taken out 95% of the billings for George Barrich. So it doesn't look like he spent two-thirds like he did the year before. There's pages or dates where he submitted to the administrative law judge. He's seven-page items, and he didn't bill for it. This is a scandal that you guys can't keep avoiding. You're going to end up individually sued because of your complicity in not bringing up this misappropriation of funds. And now fraud on that he, I don't know why you guys cannot acknowledge this. It's the reality. Anyway, I also wanted to point out, Steve Owens came up and talked to Susan Harvey before the meeting, and that should not happen. No other applicants were able to do that. Thank you. And I'm sorry, I'm rather ticked off tonight.
Thank you. Anybody else? Can we check with our Zoom attendees, please?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Ford, that will end public comment.
All right. Thank you very much. So I just want to check in on the question of the errors in the packet. So I want to make it clear that the council did have full copies. In fact, we had Mr. Barrich's applications, as he pointed out, for several weeks before we had anybody else's. And the full applications were available online under the HTML agenda, which is the typical way people access and click item by item. But they were not in the PDF packet, and apparently they're not in the paper packet in the room, the full application. As we understand from the attorney, there's not a Brown Act issue because the information was fully available. I do regret the error. I apologize for that. But I don't feel as the city, given that the information was available to everybody well in advance of the meeting, that it's in the best interest of the city to postpone this proceeding. Is there any more from the attorney that we should know?
No, Mayor. I think there's a pretty good recap. Yeah, it's a good recap. Nothing more to add.
Okay. Councilmember Sparks.
I just had a question to clarify. I'm looking at the PDF packet right now, and I think it's identical to the paper that's in the room. The statement for George Barrich is actually in here. Is that accurate, that that was available in the PDF? So at least his letter was available to everyone?
That is correct. It was the first four pages.
Okay.
The actual application form.
The application form.
And a couple of pages of additional information that were included.
I'm sorry. Forgive me. I've been at work all day. So I'm just seeing all this right to the meeting. So.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So if nothing about his statement had been available, I would feel like maybe we should postpone. But I'm seeing that people, no matter where they clicked, would have been able to see his statement for his candidacy, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And I'll also point out that the application for that applicant was available before the application period even opened. So it was available to the council members, ahead of everyone else's, is my point.
Right. Okay.
And with that, we'll move on to that regular agenda. So item six A is action to fill city council vacancy by appointment. We'll start with a brief staff report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So due to the resignation of Councilmember Rivers, which was effective January 20th of this year, a vacancy was created, as we all know, for her term expiring in December of 2026. And pursuant to the government code, the council may appoint or call a special election to fill the vacancy for the remainder of the term. There is no particular process for the appointment, as we discussed at the January 28th meeting. That's mandated by statute. So the application must be taken within 60 days of the effective date of the vacancy, so by March 21st. That's really the only rule that the council is bound to, or hold a special election. So either appoint or hold a special election by March 21st. So at the regular meeting on January 28th, the council voted to fill the vacancy by appointment, and the application period was open from January 30th through February 13th. There were six applications received from the following individuals, and this is in no particular order, just the order they were received: George Barrich, John Savage, Ryan Long, Kathleen Tandy, Sarah Sparks, and Steve O'Nines. And I will also add, immediately before this meeting, Kathleen Tandy contacted the clerk and withdrew from consideration as a council applicant. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Are there any questions from the council about the process for the applications? Okay, so we're going to start the process then with public comment. And as I said, I'm going to invite the candidates to speak first, and I'm just going to take them in the order they're listed in the agenda. So that begins with Mr. George Barrich. Feel free to come on up. And in the interest of giving a slightly fuller hearing to all of the candidates, I'm going to give the candidates all four minutes to speak, and then the remainder of public comment will be our usual three-minute limit. Feel free to come on up.
Thank you. I have my plaque tonight. I'm ready to work. Go to work. You know what this is? You can humor me. This is the state of California. Take a good look at it. It's purple. And so should this council be. My application speaks for itself. Not going to go into it. I came in fourth in the last city council race with 864 citizens, voters in this town, voting for George Barrich, based on no other campaign information than my ballot statement in the voter guide, where it clearly starts off by saying, "Cattati City Hall is a complete and utter disaster." Most of these people who voted for me strongly agree. I paid all my filing fees, over $1,000, to get on the ballot. Anybody else in the room say that? I volunteered for the code enforcement team for three years, submitting all kinds of information to help that office who say they're overworked and understaffed. Damian has paid Inspector Robert Smith over $100,000 without council approval, which is necessary and is a scandal. The other applicants didn't dare run against either one of you, any of you during the last election. Didn't dare, for good reason. They did not receive one vote in the last election. They did not pay any fees to the city. So they want to come here and apply tonight through Easy Street, just on Easy Street, just slide right in. Is that fair? You need diversity on the city council. Shows no diversity at the present time. You need a business person with over 40 years of experience in the private sector to bring some balance and experience to the city council. You need common sense on the city council to balance out the dreaming that goes on in the city council. And I will bring that common sense and experience. As an independent, I think I'll make you look smart. You'll have healthy debate, camaraderie, and shake hands at the end of the meeting, which you don't have right now. There is no debate. As neighborhood watch captain for over 20 years in Cattati, I will continue to expose the waste, the fraud, and abuse that I've seen over the years. And I would try to establish here in Cattati, a Cattati Office of Government Efficiency Code. This was going to be happening all across this nation, and I want to spearhead that. The public have seen the weaponization of City Hall in full color, thanks to people like Lori Alderman. I promise I will not appoint a convicted money launderer to the planning commission, as we've seen in recent years. I will try to stop the identity politics that has ruined our town and the racism that we've seen over the years. This zero tolerance for Cattati homeless must come to an end as well. 15 years ago, Susan Harvey and her comrades demanded I resign off the city council for doing my job, for exposing City Hall, exposing the faulty downtown specific plan we didn't have $1 for, and the higher taxes that came down the pike. That's why they came after me. And Prue Draper got up here, came forward to this spot right here, pointed to me and said, "You council members need to control that man." You believe that? In an effort to keep Cattati communist in a strong grip of communism, that's what she tried to do. Let's stop the no-bid contracts in Cattati. Let's stop the reliance on state and federal grant money that is all but dried up. It's all dried up.
Please wrap up.
Thank you, sir. Appoint an independent on the council who can help you stay out of federal court.
Thank you. And sorry, I lost my list. Next is John Savage.
Hello, council members, city staff. Nice to be here with everyone this evening. I've actually thought about doing this a couple of times before, and I stepped down to write kind of what would be my thoughts, and I never really had much clarity. But in the last three years, while I've been on the planning commission, I definitely have gotten some clarity. And it's been a joy to learn how this city works. I've enjoyed working with Noah and his staff in his department, and I've enjoyed working with the other four commissioners on the planning commission. And there's two programs I think that I enjoyed the most learning about, and that was the active transportation plan and also the housing element. And I would really like to be a part of bringing those plans to fruition in the city and seeing how those develop. On the public transportation, I think, in addition to biking and automobiles, also seniors and scooters and all types of transportations and all types of levels of transportation, I think that's one of the best indicators of a very vital community, is having a well-thought-out active transportation plan. In our housing element, I know that we have our hands somewhat tied with the new laws that are coming from the Capitol, but I think this corridor out along 116 is especially critical that we get that right, and that we make that connection between that new neighborhood going out there to our existing neighborhoods, and that we use that to enhance our livability in Cattati. I know that our livability is something that's very important here, and we all take great pride in having stewardship of the beauty of our city and the natural surroundings that we have, just like the first people did here in Cattati. And I think that we can even do more. What else can we do to enhance what we've been given here? One program that I've become familiar with is an organization that helps cities put in urban orchards and grow fruits and vegetables, well, more fruits and trees, to have food for people who are food insecure and into local food banks. So I don't know if that would be applicable for us, but we're definitely in the perfect climate for something like that. I think it's really critical to think about our legacy on the city council. One thing that came to my mind is what would the city council of 2075 look back and be most appreciative of that the city council did in 2025? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Ryan Long.
Good evening, Mayor Ford, Vice Mayor Lemus, Councilmember Sparks, and Councilmember Harvey, and the community here. My name is Ryan Long, and I am seeking appointment to the Cattati City Council because I'm deeply committed to the community here and its future. Born and raised in Sonoma County, I chose to make Cattati my home, and my wife and I are now raising our two young daughters here. As a parent and community member, I want to ensure Cattati remains a safe, welcoming, and vibrant place for all residents, while supporting smart growth and local businesses. My professional background in finance, land use, and public outreach has given me the tools to make meaningful contributions to the city council. Through my company, Connective Outreach, I work with cities and water agencies across California to improve public engagement on infrastructure projects, ensuring transparency and open communication, something I believe is essential for effective government. Locally, I serve as vice chair of the Cattati Planning Commission, where I have worked to approve over 300 new housing units, including much-needed affordable housing. I also serve on the Water Supply Committee as a member of the Sonoma County Alliance, where I engage with decision-makers on critical water issues affecting our region. Additionally, I recently participated and actually currently participating in the Pathways to Leadership Program that was provided by the cities of Ronard Park and Cattati. This program provided me with hands-on experience in local government, policy development, and regional planning, while fostering connections with city officials and experts across multiple fields. Through this program, I gained a deeper understanding of the challenges facing our community and the strategies needed to address them. I believe in thoughtful leadership and smart planning to ensure that Cattati preserves its small-town charm while preparing for future challenges. My experience working across multiple sectors, including business, government, and community advocacy, as well as finance, has prepared me to be an effective and collaborative leader on the council. I would be honored to bring my expertise, passion, and problem-solving mindset to the city council and to serve this community and everyone here. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, Sarah Sparks.
Hello, council members, city staff, other city staffs. Thank you for having me here tonight. You know, I've thought a lot about what I'm going to say, and I know I had my statements, and it's posted online. Everyone can read it. I'm clearly not the most qualified person to be standing in front of you today. But I will say that I have long dreamed of being on a city council. I remember telling my boss when I was in my early twenties, like, I really want to be on a city council someday. It's something that I feel is a way to really impact the community that we live. And my dream is that the changes that we make here, the community that we create here, and the solutions that we create can expand out beyond the borders of Cattati into Sonoma County in California and beyond. Because really, I see Cattati as the most progressive city in Sonoma County, and that ultimately is why I love it so much. Because I feel like with the time that we're in at this stage in the world, we don't really have a lot of time to waste in solving the problems that we face with climate change, with housing affordability, with just social economic factors that play. Honestly, I'm rambling, but we have a lot of problems in this world. And I feel like in a town like Cattati, we could make a real difference, and that difference, as I said before, could expand out and create larger impacts in the world. And that's where I see a potential value here in potentially taking that empty seat there. I know it would be complicated because you already have a council member, Sparks, so I don't know how that would work out. But it's a long shot anyway. So yeah, I have a background as a business systems analyst, as I said in my statement, and really what that comes down to is asking questions, understanding problems, understanding potential solutions, and recommending them. And then, of course, once you figure out what the best solution is, you work with others to implement it. And so I've been doing that for the past 10-plus years. And I've become a people leader as well, and really stepped into who I am as a leader. And I really see this as a potential opportunity to really have an impact in the world. Because to be completely honest, I spend a lot of time thinking about, what could we do to make this world a better place, not just for obviously myself, my children, their children, other people's children, like just nature, just how do we make this world a better place? And I feel like, yeah, this is a good opportunity to do it. Honestly, I wasn't planning on this coming up at this stage. I was planning on running for election at some point in the future, but this opportunity came along, and I've been in the Pathways to Leadership Program, and I've learned a lot about what it takes to run a city like Cattati or Ronard Park. I've met a lot of people, like Damian and Officer, I forget your name, but Chris, thank you, and then Noah and Andrea. Oh, okay. That's close. So anyway, I've met a lot of great people, both in the staff here. I've interviewed you, Mr. Ford, and Mayor Ford. And anyway, I just feel like the people here really care, and that really makes a difference. And I really care. And like I said, I might not be the most qualified, but I am really committed to making a difference, and whether it's now or later, I'm taking this opportunity now. And if it doesn't happen, then I will run for city council someday and hopefully get elected the good old-fashioned way, rather than taking Easy Street, as Mr. Barrich pointed out, because this has been pretty easy. So anyway, thank you for your time and your consideration. Appreciate it.
Thank you much. And finally, Stephen O'Nines.
My name is Stephen O'Nines. I came to Cattati after a career in the Air Force, after 3,700 hours of flying. So I'm really fun to sit at, but I can talk air-to-air combat with you. After moving here, this was the first opportunity I had for community service because living overseas in Air Force bases, you don't get a chance to do much of that. I did about 25 years working for the city so far. I have some things to apologize for. Evidently, I shook your hand, Ms. Harvey. I also said hello to Ben Ford, and I think I nodded to Mr. O'Bid. I apologize if that offends anyone. I have degrees in economics, accounting, and statistics. I have a master's degree in business administration with operations and systems management that you, the taxpayers, paid for because I was in the Air Force on active duty when they sent me there. I don't have much more to say. I'll let my record stand for itself. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, and now we'll open up public comment for anybody else who wishes to speak on the appointment of a city council member to fill the vacancy. And I have two speaker cards. We'll start with Adina Flores.
Good evening, council. I'm a little irritated that I even have to be here this evening, but I find it really odd that out of all the candidates, the only individual whose full application was not included within the PDF packet and the other aforementioned details was candidate George Barrich. I find that really questionable. I, I find that really questionable. Normally, I'm here at these meetings to speak up for our Latinos, our natives, and our blacks. Today, I'm here because I feel that you guys are targeting conservative white men in this county 100%. So that doesn't sit well with me. My father was a felon, so what I learned really young is how to identify when people are lying. When Ms. Alderman said that she was going to sue you personally, Ms. Sparks, you blinked nonstop. You also blinked nonstop when, uh, Mr. Berich highlighted the corruption within the city council, so you're lying. Uh, it's very obvious, I'm trained to highlight lies. So, uh, you know, as you guys are aware, with the DEMA investigation currently of homeless monies, my research is being used by the FBI, so it, it's very clear to me when people are lying. Um, I, I don't like how Ms. Alderman and Mr. Berich have been treated. Democrats are the most racist people in this county. I personally emailed every single one of you that over 40 Latino children were raped at Boys and Girls Club. I'm being sued for speaking up for the victims. Not a single one of you felt it was necessary to respond. You know who's against Latino children being raped? Conservatives. There's also a local predator in this community that you also know about, Pocho. He was the photographer hired by local Democrats who's an alleged rapist and pedophile. None of you felt that it was appropriate to respond. That's a major issue in the community when you've got him up in our public schools. You know who would respond? A conservative. So, uh, Mr. Berich has served on this council before. He's very well-versed in what goes on in local governance and the corruption. I don't want to have to be a problem for you guys. I am the leading activist in Sonoma County. I have enough on my plate, as I just mentioned, so if I need to become a problem, and if these individuals are not treated with the respect and fairness that they deserve, then I can start coming to these meetings. I don't want to, but I will. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Kattati City Council. I'm here to comment on some, on the agenda, is that okay?
It's actually not. We don't have a, a, a comment period for items not on the agenda tonight because it's a special meeting. Um, uh, you want to just give us 10 seconds about what it's about? And our next regular meeting is a week from tonight, so that would be the, that would be the time to come. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Lori Alderman.
Um, I also wanted to point out that my, um, public comment back there does not include the, all the attachments or anything, so even people here can't, don't have a complete one. Um, the, once again, the city of Kattati has tainted an appointment process for a new council member as it has in the last three appointments in 2009, 2011, and 2013. The agenda packet does not have a cover sheet for George Berich's application or any explanation why the first part of the special meeting agending packet shows Berich's supposed criminal record. That's what you put, put in first for him. This history was submitted by Berich to prevent what happened in 2012 from happening again. And this is the one. Elect Pat Gilardi and Mark Lammon, and it has these same charges, and so Mr. Berich was being proactive to, um, he, he was, it was you, the graphic was used by George Berich as, to show him as a, with a criminal pass. The charges were fully dismissed as it was not Berich who was growing marijuana, it was someone else. So, I, I mean, on the face, you guys have, you corrupted it when, if, if it was an error, it was an error. But you didn't, you had six hours today to, to cancel this meeting as I requested this morning and reschedule it to a date and time. These people have no idea what they're getting into. I, if I were all of you, I would run from being appointed to this council. You're going to end up, the corruption is getting horrible. The things that have happened with the city staff and what we've uncovered and you're just, it's not worth your time, and I really enjoyed, I, I urged Kay Rivers to, um, to run. I was number 30 on her, um, signature, and she's a great person. She had ideals like all of these people, but she learned thousand-page agendas because you can't spread, that you all talk among yourselves, you don't allow the public to speak. Um, you reprimand people like Michelle Berman for speaking as a citizen even, when she's a planning commission, when, there are things going on here that need to stop, and you need to, um, pay fair or call a new, um, new, a special election instead of having things tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's my last speaker's card, so I'm, I'm just going to take anybody else in the room who wishes to, to come speak. Come on up, sir.
Don't really want to be repetitious, but some of this is going to be. I traveled to this meeting today from Dixon. It's a lengthy trip and consumption of my time. I likewise do not appreciate the presentation of Mr. Berich's information, leading off with court records or the absence of his entire application. That's a very valid point that Ms. Alderman made. You don't put something in there that's designed to dissuade a group of people from voting for a person because of allegations in the person's past. You put his statement first. I'm kind of wondering what the hell is going on? Then we get an email from Mr. Patterson. His response that the application had been transferred from HTML to PDF begs the question of whom is in charge of looking at the agenda once it is completed? This is an editorial function, or at least a secretarial function, which is the primary duty of the city clerk. As Mr. Obed is the city clerk with a basic responsibility to ensure the correctness of documents, it falls on him as well as his deputy, Mr. Patterson. Then I go to look at the agenda packet in the back, and you're telling me they still couldn't correct that and get those four pages in there? You've got a problem in your city. This more, I'm sure there are more than adequate compensations entitled to the public to a better bureaucracy than the one you were providing. Again, going on to the real pertinent part of this meeting, I will reiterate my position on providing a balance reflecting your citizens' political beliefs. If we truly want diversity, equity, and inclusion, then Mr. Berich is your obvious choice. It is my understanding that two of the applicants are on the planning commission. As they were appointed by like-minded people of the same political beliefs, they should be disqualified out of the gate because he will not provide alternative views. I do not know the qualifications of the other candidates, other than what has been stated in their applications. Considering that Mr. Berich's experience and involvement with the Kattati community is 20 years or more, and I've known him at least that long, it would be hard to find a candidate who has been silent during this time to adequately represent your community. In other words, you're taking, you want to take somebody other than Mr. Berich, you're taking somebody that hasn't been up here speaking to you, complaining, or saying anything about what's going on. And that's something that really stands out to me. Most of your applicants that came up here are saying, I know this person, I know that person. That's not what you want. You don't want people working with your staff. I'm a former councilman. I saw what happens. It becomes a little group that gets together and decides what's good for the, the community, instead of going out and asking your citizens what they want. I understand quite well how local politics works. Reasonability is subordinate to ego, and this defeats making logical and fruitful choices. As the majority of this council has not encountered George Berich over a period of years, you must rely on innuendo and misinformation designed to malign Mr. Berich rather than laud him for his efforts at bringing accountability, excuse me, and thought to your decision-making process. Do not forget that Mr. Berich was the only one of your applicants who follows city business well enough to actually know to appear at your last council meeting when the vacancy was first acknowledged and discussed. That speaks volumes about the candidates. I have one more paragraph. It is time to change course, just as our country is doing, and appoint a person who doesn't represent the status quo, but those who are not represented. Reject discrimination, inequity, and exclusion, and vote to give a voice to the people who are currently are voiceless. Please appoint George Berich to the vacant council seat. Thank you very much.
Councilmembers, staff, my name is Kimberlin Moffett. I'm the current chair of the Planning Commission and have the privilege of working with both John Savage and Ryan Long on that commission. You have an important decision ahead of you today of who is going to be your fifth, and it was really hard for me to advocate for either one of those two, who I believe are your best options, because they are both strong advocates for the city of Kattati. Ryan is passionate about clear communications and citizens' rights. John is just as equally passionate about the legacy and sustainability of Kattati as a city. They are both very admirable people who care about their community. John is a leader, a natural leader, who I know that I've relied on quite a bit when I was first joining the planning commission, to lead with integrity and a sense of calm as well. They're both very good at disagreeing. They disagree with me all the time, but they do so with a sense of grace, and they both do so with their intentions very clear. And so I am curious to see how you decide tonight, but I don't think that you could go wrong with either one of those, and I will be sad to lose one of them from the planning commission.
Anybody else in the room? Okay, let's check with our Zoom attendees.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Once again, speaking to our Zoom attendees, please use the raise hand icon to make a public comment. The first hand is from Jenny Blaker. Jenny, you have the floor. Uh, Ms. Blaker, are you able to unmute your microphone?
Hello, uh, good evening, council. Um, I'd just like to read something. Oh, it's just disappeared off my screen. I was just going to read something from the screen. Um, sorry, I just need to find it again because it's just disappeared. Okay. For those who were not aware of this part of Kattati's history, I wanted to read something from Ballotpedia, um, that says, oh goodness, now I can't find it. Anyway, it was giving the date in 2009, November the 17th, 2009, when George Berich had been on the city council and was recalled in a special recall election, a special recall election, election just for that purpose. Um, and he was recalled by, I've lost the exact page, but it was approximately two-thirds of the votes, two-thirds of the people who voted, voted to recall him in that election. And so I would just remind the council, I'm sure you all know, but there may be people in the audience who are wondering more about the history behind all of this, and I too wish you the very best of luck in choosing between some, um, very well-qualified candidates who have a lot of passion about the Kattati community and moving forward into a positive future. Thank you and good luck.
Seeing no further hands on Zoom, Mayor Ford, that will end public comment.
All right. So we'll pull back to council for discussion and decision. Uh, so I have a process to propose to my colleagues here, which is, um, prior to anybody moving a name for approval, I'd like to go all the way down the line and just hear your thoughts on your top couple of candidates right now to see where we're at. Um, and, and then I will propose a way to narrow it down before we get to the, to a number one. Go ahead, Councilmember.
May I request the privilege to respond to the, very briefly, to the comment about my lying?
Absolutely. Yes, yes.
Um, I just, many of you probably aren't aware, I'm nearly legally blind, and I wear contact lenses, and, um, I was trying to take notes during the comments, so I would look down at my page, and I've been having problems with eye dryness today, so my contacts weren't coming up, and I didn't realize it was so noticeable. Now I have something new to be very self-conscious about, which is blinking too much. But I assure you, I was not intending to be deceptive or lie. I, my contacts aren't coming up properly when I look up from my page. That's all.
Thanks. All right, so, um, is that acceptable to everybody? We'll, we'll each take a turn before we move into the next stage? Okay. Um, Councilmember Harvey, are you willing to take the first go?
Do you want reasons or names, or what do you?
Yeah, your top couple, and you're thinking about why and what they'd bring to the, to the council.
Okay, um, my top couple would be, um, John and Ryan. I think that they've learned, both learned a lot on the planning commission, and they've shown that they've done, um, a lot for the community, and I think that they could, um, either of them could hit, hit the ground running because they're aware of a lot of the things that we're already doing.
Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. Um, my top two would be the same because of this being a shorter appointment, and we really, the, the reason we've decided to do a appointment rather than a special election is that the election would take place several months from now, and we really need to fill the vacancy sooner. Well, that was, that was an important reason for me to decide to go this way. Um, I think either of the candidates that have been serving on the planning commission, they spoke in their statements and comment about specific things that are ongoing with the city, so I feel like they'd be ready to hit the ground running. I also wanted to state that, um, Sarah Sparks, although she has an excellent last name, is not related to me in any way. In fact, we haven't met before. Um, and I also wanted to state, just for transparency, that, um, John Savage did give me a courtesy phone call just to let me know that he was throwing his name in the hat, since he is my, uh, planning commission appointee. And, um, we didn't have a very substantial conversation. We just, just talked about that he was going to run or put his name in. And I also had a conversation, um, with Ryan Long, who had asked me about my service on the council and what the time commitment was and things like that. We had a, a nice conversation, but I avoided asking him really any questions about, about himself. I just wanted to serve as, um, giving him some information about the, the council. So just for transparency, I did speak to those two people.
Thanks. Vice Mayor Lemus.
Uh, yes, I'm, also concur with my other city council members that I, um, I, I would consider, you know, John Savage and also Ryan Long to move them forward. Um, and, you know, John has participated in some of our events that we've held here, like flag raisings and other ceremonies, and I appreciate their work, both Ryan and John and, and just all the applicants. I appreciate everyone that submitted their names today.
Thanks, all. I had similar responses. I was, um, impressed by the applicants and wish we could appoint more than one. Maybe one wants my seat and I could just go, but no, I probably shouldn't do that. Um, so I, I served on planning commission with, with Stephen O'Nines for years and really enjoyed serving with him and sitting next to him, and he's another person who has very different perspectives than me and different, obviously very different life experiences. One thing he brought to the planning commission regularly was a kind of an eye for whether applicants were being treated fairly by the city, and he pretty much asked every applicant that, are you being treated fairly by the city? And, um, so I appreciated that, that he brought. I did have conversations as well with two of the applicants, with Ryan Long, who is my planning commission appointee. We had a, a meeting already scheduled to talk about planning commission, to just sort of how it's going prior to the, the vacancy coming up. So at that meeting, we also talked about this vacancy, and he asked me similar questions about time commitment and things like that. And, uh, Sarah Sparks and I talked after the last meeting about the same issues, um, time commitment and what's involved. So, um, my, those would be my top three. I think experience with the city is, is a valuable asset for a council member. I, I am comfortable moving forward with the, with the top two that everybody else identified, of Ryan Long, John Savage. People comfortable there? Yeah, go ahead.
Um, just to be transparent, um, Ryan did reach out to me, and I, um, did, um, meet with Ryan. He wanted to know how my experience was on the council, and I shared that experience, and it's been a pleasure. And, um, when Steve O'Nines came up to the And it's been a pleasure. And, um, when Steve O'Nines came up to the, um, dais, he just was trying to be pleasant, and, um, hadn't seen him for a long time. And when I ran last year, I went to his door, and he and Edie were not there. So he was just trying to be, um, friendly and say hello, since he hadn't seen me in a long time. And I want to thank him for his 25 years' worth of service, because he and his whole family did a lot of service to this community.
Agreed.
Just to clarify, too, I had brief text messages with two of the candidates as well, with Ryan and with John, but didn't get to meet with either of them.
Great. I want to make one more comment about, um, Mr. Berich's application. I, I appreciate some of the, some of the assets that he would bring to the council. I, I would never, um, having been recalled from the council, I would never overrule the voters of Katari in, uh, undoing that decision. So that's, that's a non-starter for me. So, it sounds like we've narrowed it down to John Savage and Ryan Long. And I'm wondering if anybody wants to, um, discuss, uh, either one of those, or make a motion, if you feel like. I would love to hear some comments about between both of them, but either way.
Sure. I, I think both of them would make excellent choices. And it, it was kind of a, um, it's, it's a tough decision. Right now, though, I, I would like to propose that we appoint John Savage. Um, he is my Planning Commission appointee. Um, I've been very impressed with his service on the Planning Commission. Um, some strengths that I believe he brings is that he, they've both been serving, he's been serving for slightly longer, and he's chaired the Planning Commission, which, um, is good experience. I also know that he has , uh, business experience, brings that diversity to the commission. And we're concerned with a lot of questions about housing in this, on the city council. And I, I think it's important to have the representation of somebody who has chosen to live in higher-density housing, near transit. Um, we have a lot of folks who live in, um, single-family homes. It's good to have someone with a perspective of a different type of housing on the board, on the, on the council. Um, again, I think they would both make excellent choices. Uh, John has just served slightly longer on the Planning Commission, has a little bit more experience.
Um, I concur with, um, with what Laura said. Um, I think we can't go wrong with either of them. Um, I think that they both bring a lot of passion, and they both have a lot of knowledge. And I would, um, concur, as was pointed out, uh, John seems to be a natural leader with integrity. Um, so, um, I would second that, uh, motion.
So I'd like to ask if both of you are okay with the other two of us having, uh, a chance to speak before we move to a vote? Okay. Vice Mayor Lemus.
Yes, I just want to share that, um, before being on city council, I also was on Planning Commission, so I know all the hard work that goes into, uh, that job and working with Noah and the staff here. So I know that both Ryan and John have a lot of experience, have given a lot of time to really learn that work that deals with everything that we do, land use, the housing, everything that we receive here on this side. So I appreciate both of them as well. And, uh, thank you so much. I, I concur as well.
All right. Thank you all. I, I would probably lean the other way between the two of them. I, I feel like, um, it, just to be clear, I don't live in a single-family home. I also share walls with two people to, so we're, um, but, um, I, I think that Ryan's current, you know, raising a family in town is a perspective on living in town that we also don't have currently represented on council. And I think that would be a valuable one. Um, his, his professional experience, both as an entrepreneur and as a public outreach and land use expert is, and, and finance background, which both of them have, is, uh, would be a, a real advantage. But it feels to me like we're leaning towards John, and we have a motion on the floor, so I'm happy to go ahead and call for a vote. Let's do a roll call vote, please, Kevin. So the motion on the floor is to appoint John Savage, just to be clear.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lemus?
Yes.
Mayor Ford?
Yes. All right. Thank you all. Um, and again, thank you to all the applicants. Um, I really appreciate it. And I want to remind you, there are lots of other opportunities for service here, including potentially, well, at least one Planning Commission vacancy. So watch for that opportunity. We'd love to see some of you apply there. Um, so let me make my way back to my agenda. Where, how pretty it is. Uh, okay. So, uh, is there any information received after the agenda was posted?
There were some public comments received, yes.
Okay. And we received all of those, and they're available in back as well?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So with that, um, we're gonna, we have a, a strategic planning meeting immediately following this one. We're gonna take a five-minute break between them. Thank you so much. We're adjourned.